...implement right away, that it doesn't need to wait for a new facility. So those things we'll be providing right back to the steering committee, right back to hospital senior management, and seeing what we can implement right away. And there've already been some successes with that. And same with KCA, some, they're hearing some issues internally that like with the process for travel, things like that. So it doesn't need to wait for the new build. Um, I, my plans all, um, that, those are our plans for engagement. Again, we're open to, we don't think we have all the ideas, so we're open to hearing how we can, how do you think it's best to engage people? So, um, are, we will be having a presence online soon. I know the All Nations Health Partners, it's a number of partners coming together and there's a bit of work to do, um, to have their presence, their branding completed. But the hospital has committed to having information on their website. As of right now, the only information that if you Google All Nations Hospital, you might see a few social media posts and then, um, media. So hospital's committed to having that information there. There'll be the original resolution, um, steering committee information, project updates, um, events coming up. So look for that and we hope to have that live for our public kickoff event. Um, and in terms of the city, um, I'm hoping to have some conversations with, um, if council is favorable, a number of ways that the city could be involved. I think not, not just the city for this one, but we're looking for ambassadors to kind of be engaged, come to the community sessions and kind of be that, sometimes a group is a little quiet. We need someone to kind of help with a conversation. So if we can identify people like that for us, that would be wonderful. The city to act as ambassadors and participate as well. Um, we'll be looking for space for static displays. I know the city has a lot of amazing facilities that I've been visiting. The pool, I'm so happy there's a pool in here. We don't have one where I'm from. My son just loves it. Um, and then distributing information, um, and probably looking for venues for public meetings. We're hoping to move them around, move the times around, evening, afternoon, weekend. Just, just try to capture as many people as we can. And then also move to people's comfort zones. So if there is specific areas of town or facilities people are comfortable with, that's what we're hoping to do. Um, and then, yeah, just to continue the conversation, how do we best engage the community? So, there I rambled for a few minutes. If there's any questions or...
Does council have any questions for Charlene? Understanding that the process is just getting off the ground. Charlene, if, um, if there's people here today that would like to get ahold of you to speak to their group or reach out to different groups, can they contact you? What, where would they get ahold of you?
For sure. Uh, my email is ckiessick, C-K-I-S-S-I-C-K at LWDH dot O-N dot C-A. I've got that. And I can provide my information to Heather as well.
Okay.
Um, I can be called direct at the hospital or on my cellphone. So, looking forward to hearing from people.
Any, no questions? Okay, Charlene, thank you. Looking forward to you coming back.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, um, our next deputation is Konstantina. You're gonna take the lead or Megan?
Yeah. Can I present from there? Do I have to use the microphone?
We just put a microphone over there.
Is it, we, we zoom? Oh, there's, oh, it's just like a regular PDF. Hey, good, because I was going to use this. No mouse? It does. Okay. Okay, I'll, I'll do the best I can. Thank you.
Okay, Konstantina, I'll leave with you if you want to just introduce it. Thanks, Megan.
Sure. Um, so, uh, the Harborfront Business Development Plan is a project that began back in 2016 with some early conversations around potential redevelopment opportunities along Lake Wood. Um, in 2017, council approved funding applications to both NHTFC and SEDOR, and we were successful in receiving financial approval for this project. Um, the city engaged HTFC Planning Design in 2018 to deliver this project. And so I'm very pleased to welcome Konstantina Duzbri from HTFC Planning Design to present the 2019 Harborfront Business Development Plan to council. Um, this plan, similar to other projects that the city has undertaken, such as the Beaches Park and Trails Plan and the Downtown Revitalization Plan, is intended to be a master plan delivered in phases and in consideration of partnership and funding opportunities. So with that, I will turn it over to Konstantina and she will showcase the work that we've undertaken.
Konstantina, feel free to introduce yourself. Nice to have young people here.
Oh, okay. Uh, Nate, good morning, everyone. Uh, I brought my chauffeur, Evan Gregory, over in the corner there. Um, I thought he might be running the show if I had to present at the front, but he looks like he's off the hook. Um, he, I thought I could pull him out of school and, and do a, come see what mummy does for a living day.
Well, he's welcome.
Thank you. Um, I, I, what I'm doing is projecting just the report. I think that you may or may not have had a chance to go through it. So I don't want to get into the weeds of the report because I only have, you know, a short amount of time, but I thought it might be helpful, um, if we, if we use this and then you can scroll through it on your own afterwards and know where to find things. Um, I think it's important to say, um, to go through our team to start. Um, the team that worked on it was HTFC Planning Design, as noted, a couple of people from our office. But in addition, we also had STANTEC Engineering on our team. We had Bob Correco, who's a transportation engineer. And we had Warren Thompson, who's our business analyst, because the study was also supposed to study, as all of you probably know, the, the parking of downtown. So we needed a transportation engineer. And we were also to put a lens of business and market and analysis on what we're proposing here. Um, and so it was important to have that kind of team to study those things in detail and, um, ensure what we proposed at Harborfront had some basis in, in those findings that we do. And I can go into those in a li- a little bit as we go. The process was to have a stakeholder group working with the city. We, we felt that because of the, the aspect of the business analysis, it would be important to have business people who are in Burnier and Main Street be invited to be part of that stakeholder group. And working with them, we tried to have a very diverse group sort of guiding us. And at our launch meeting, they helped us identify people who could become part of the workshops. The process was a very, um, uh, strategic move to have, um, people who would be committed to a two-workshop, uh, process as well as to be available through email and through web survey. Um, because, um, we were looking at some difficult problems such as parking in the downtown of Kenora um, and Harborfront. And because we were looking at this from a business lens, it was important that the group that we had as part of the workshops were committed to the whole process so we could all learn together and move along together. So what happened is as our transportation engineers studied the parking of downtown, they would do a short presentation of their findings to date at each workshop. And in that manner, everyone, all of us could be knowledgeable about every aspect of the project as we move forward together to come towards a solution. Um, during the, another very important thing in the process to note would be that during our engagement with the stakeholders in the workshop, um, we, at the start, came up with nine goals. And they're, they're displayed here. It's hard to see, Saul, I'll, I'll read them out. Um, these nine goals, however, um, were intended as sort of a report card that not only us as the design team and technical team had to make sure our plans fulfill these goals, but these goals came from the same group that then would, um, have to measure their own decisions against as they helped us come to the solution of what, what Harborfront could be. And those goals are for a four-season destination, that there's connectivity to things like Tunnel Island and other parts of the downtown. Sustainability, and that term was used not just for environmental sustainability, but business as well as, um, economic, sorry, not as well as economics, or social sustainability as well. Um, the fourth is embracing Anishinaabe and Métis culture. Five was security and safety, and then opportunities for business. Finally, uh, not finally, sorry, inclusivity, programming, and a place for learning. So these nine goals became very important. And one of them, embracing Anishinaabe and Métis culture, became of special note because there wasn't a lot of representation in our stakeholder group or at the workshops from those communities. We had a couple of people. So we, in the process, decided that we needed to do some engagement and have meetings with the indigenous community. So we, we actually met and communicated with, um, a roundtable discussion that represented the three First Nations closest to the city Kenora, as well as the Métis Nation. And from there, we were led to have further discussions. They felt that we would need to meet with their elders in their communities to really, uh, dig into this, um, idea of how do we, how do we embrace and how do we celebrate their culture and their history. So it was, it was a wonderful process and, um, we would share our findings from those with, again, the steering committee and the workshop as we move through. So, um, I don't want to go into process too long, but I think that there was a critical point, and these three images display that critical point. Um, in our initial workshop, we came up with the goals and people were free to sketch their ideas on, on some large plans. From those, we came up with three concepts. And it was, um, the most critical piece that we found was to display all the things that people wanted to see on Harborfront. Um, we would be going to Concept Three, which was minimizing the amount of parking on Harborfront. Um, we then showed them what it would look like if we only took a little bit away and what the Harborfront development could look like if we kept the amount of parking that was on the waterfront. This was a very important workshop because, as I said, members of the business community who are all along this strip were part of this. So it was important that we all move forward together. We were given, we gave all groups these three sort of plans that had a different level of balance between amenity and physical parking for people. And they were free to draw on whichever one they wanted and come up with their preferred plan. Every single group took number three. Um, they had, it was a challenge because everyone wanted to keep parking, but they also saw what they would give up. So, um, moving forward, we were, we were instructed through the workshops to move forward with that option. So I won't get into details regarding the parking study, but at a high level, um, what the parking study found, um, was that parking is stressed on market days and days that have that type of intensity downtown. And what, what we found was that there was quite a bit of parking available further away from Harborfront, where the market days is, and that, um, there was sort of a, a, a lack of, there was parking that was empty further away. And so there was sort of a, an, an, and sort of a, a rebalance of understanding perhaps how far one might walk and sort of studying that. And we found that from Harborfront to the First Street Extension where the parking fields are now is about a 10-minute walk. It took me actually three minutes from Hojo's to walk there. There, these numbers are quite average. They're for slower walkers, maybe with some accessibility. Um, today, we know that First Street Extension has been pushed through and we've created some really nice fingers into these back areas that might have felt like the backwater. Um, but the parking study found that we do have a stress and Market Days has done some great things of creating shuttles and those sorts of things, bringing people to, to Harborfront and allowing them to park a little further. But we did understand that as we developed Harborfront, we would also have to figure out, um, in tandem, how we were going to deal with, uh, removal of some of the parking and where, where would that go? Because people do need to park, and that was acknowledged. Um, so finally, to the master plan where we can get into sort of the fun stuff and how we accomplished it, um, I'm going to remind everyone, of course, um, that this is a high-level plan and it's a master plan. And even though we've done these really pretty, oh, I'm sorry, I'm a Mac user, I'm having trouble with the mouse. Um, even though we've done these really pretty diagrams, um, what's important is as each stage, as every part gets developed, it needs to be done in, um, with more public engagement, with more partnership with the First Nations, with more discussions with the community. Similar to the 2004 plan that actually our office did. Um, the roundabout certainly ended up looking exactly the same, almost in the right location. But I can tell you that Harborfront looks nothing like the one that we ended up building. And that's because when we finally came to building that, we had consultations with the community through the process and we designed it to the needs of that community of that time. And what, what, because this is a living document and things change. So these are the ideas of the groups that we met with. And I forgot to mention, we also had an open house at the end at the Discovery Center and received lots of great comments from that. And we've, we've inputted, um, changes to this plan based on the comments we received at the open house as well. Um, but as I said, each, each phase will need to be studied further as we move forward. But at least it gives us, similar to the master plan in 2004 that identified this as a festival area, we have certainly, um, been able to identify some really key projects and we have been able to, uh, narrow down where things might need to happen. And, uh, but this is a high-level master plan. So, to start, um, i- in terms of continuity and connection, there was a lot of interest from the people who participated and the people who came to the open house to have a connection to Tunnel Island. Um, the scope of studying that is a little bit outside of the parameters of this project because it is, uh, something that land ownership in the surrounding areas would need to be looked at. We're showing it here diagrammatically as, you know, pedestrian bridge over to the other side. But really, it's more as, um, a hope that one day we can study that a little more in detail. And there's probably different ways that that can be achieved. Um, the, the people in the workshops and the open house felt that not a lot of investment should be taken um, at McLeod Park, but there's washrooms there and they're not, it's not, uh, it needs a bit of beautification and a little bit more of some imaging because it is, as you enter, one of the main features that you see as you enter. Um, Husky Landing, also very few improvements. Maybe a, a opportunity to get down to the water with the floating dock. Um, through the workshops with the, the group we worked with, one of the things that we did is study waterfronts at the start and talk about what makes a great waterfront. And one of the elements that you look at, that you find worldwide is, um, that there's different opportunities to interact with water on a waterfront. That's, that's one of the main key ingredients to make a great waterfront. And that could mean that you can see it like we can today at Harborfront. It could mean that you're physically touching the lake. It also could mean that on, on the banks, there might be a water feature with water. And that's, that is enough for people to feel like they're connected with the water. So one of the items here that we want to put forward is the idea that the water display today is not lit. So we only can see it in the daytime and in the summer. So there's, a part of the proposal is to make this a little bit of a bigger deal, have it lit at night and possibly add some jets and put it on a programmed timer to allow for some variety and it becomes a real key for the bay. So it's just on enhancing on what, what you have already. Um, so part of the, the major proposal here would be this boardwalk. We call it an art walk and an indigenous art walk. Because we feel this, this boardwalk that winds over the lake could be a place, having heard from the First Nations and the Métis, that they want their history told. So this would be an opportunity to have, um, interpretive elements to begun, begin to tell people that they're actually on Treaty Three land. And we think this is a wonderful place to have benches and shade trees and make it a really lovely multi-use path to allow people on their bikes as well as walking, to all walk along here, really widen it, naturalize. There was a lot of interest, as we said, in sustainability, to naturalize the banks where we can. As well as, that will also help with the goose problem that we've also been told about. Um, one of the other main features along this strip would be, um, increasing the public docks. And we have some seasonal kiosks here related to that. And these could be simple things like things related to boating such as tackle shops or rental kiosks, we're renting out kayaks or, or even a motorboat. Um, so that, the idea there is to add these kiosks. And, you know, we're showing five of them, but they would be with market interest. And this could help local businesses, um, incubators, um, come in and operate these things. So from the business lens. Um, to be able to accomplish some of the things that we're going to see next and also with the increased activity along here, we took a look at Lakeview Drive in itself and felt that we can increase the parking for Harborfront and sort of transfer some of the hu- parking that we took away from the south lot by providing angled parking along Lakeview Drive, as well as an addition, additional parking pod, similar to the one that's there already. This allowed us to bring quite a few more parking spots near this area. Um, now to have the back, to have the angled parking, we needed to sort of design this similar to Main Street. And that is to provide, um, speed table crossings to these parking lots so that people can safely cross. And perhaps as we come over the bridge, start to think of this area as the beginning of Harborfront rather than just an afterthought or a means to an end. So with the boardwalk, sorry, my mouse, I'm not doing very well with this. Sorry. Um, the idea is to bring in a, we're working with a transportation engineer. We felt that a median would work well here. As we said, the table crossings and bump out, similar to the dialogue that you get on Main Street, that as you enter then, you are on Harborfront right back here and all the amenities begin, um, from there. So moving on from this location, and I will show you at the end of this some of the 3D models that we did so you can start to visualize some of this. Um, I think I might need my son to help me with this. Oh, darn. Okay, well, we'll just, oh, it's still working, kind of. Um, so start, part of the, the market analysis lens, our business analysts challenged us to find ways to maybe find land that we could perhaps lease off to other people, um, or sell even, that were holdings that the city had. And this is one of them. This location here, we see, could be developed into perhaps a mixed-use and condos above or boutique hotel, that kind of development seems appropriate here. Not only does it bring people down to the Harborfront, um, but, you know, intensifies the usage and also becomes a tax base for, that could be refunneled into the Harborfront. The model that we looked at when we were designing was the Forks in Winnipeg. And, um, let me see if that works. Oh, that works better. The Forks in Winnipeg, um, where it's an arm's length to the government. They have, what they do is every development they have there, including, um, the leasing of the, the restaurants and the common, which is something run by them. It's the, it's where you go and have a drink and you buy drink from, uh, this central area with food all around. All that money goes funneling right back into the Harborfront or right back into the Forks. And it helps pay for capital projects as well as the maintenance and operations of, of, um, of the site. Um, so the idea was to start looking at Harborfront in that kind of model. And in doing that, we looked at that parcel land, and now you can see it on the screen lower here up on Water Street is a parcel of land as well, to look at. Perhaps getting somebody else to buy it or lease it from the city and use those funds to infuse some of these other ideas. And that was one of the anchors of, of the business development side. The other anchor was, as I alluded to earlier with the kiosks, is to find more opportunities for local business people to, uh, run or, um, bring their businesses down to Harborfront. I'll go into that a little bit as we move through. Um, but before we get there, I think one of the biggest things, and it's in the first phase, is the ten-cell structure today as it exists. This is a piece of infrastructure that, in our minds, um, having studied this in other places, is underutilized. Um, this is a keystone. This can be utilized seven days a week. It's existing and needs very little money input for programming and maybe some additional materials to help set it up for things like a movie night or a basketball court or even sand volleyball. This thing could have salsa dancing, similar to the Forks and how they've used their stage. This, this should be the first step of business is to do that. And as our previous presenter said, mentioned, if the locals are using Harborfront, not only will they find more value in putting more money into Harborfront, but also, um, tourists will be interested to come there as well.
Konstantina, sorry to interrupt.
Yes, am I going too long, Roy?
About five minutes.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, not very long at all. Okay, so, um, in this proposal, we have the ten-cell, the ten-cell structure, sorry, the, the, um, the pavilion that's here with the washrooms, it's removed. And in speaking with the, um, First Nations people we just, we talked to, we thought, they felt there should be a place that we can, they can have ceremonies and it can be a place for everyone.
Konstantina, I'm sorry, I've been told by council you can pick on this.
Oh, okay.
You'd be surprised by the silent subtle messages that are around the table.
I bet. I, I haven't looked up at all and I should, sorry.
I've been around a little while, so I'd pick up on that.
It's, it's a really long and in-depth plan. So I, I really, I know that it's publicly available and I really recommend everyone read it page to page because I'm really not doing it service. But I'll, uh, I'll try to, to get through it. Um, so the, the existing building is, is removed. Um, most people agreed that, well, first of all, it's an aging facility and we have to plan for the future anyhow. What we put back should have a washroom facility and storage for the ten-cell structure because by adding activities and additional, um, pieces to, to, to put up a volleyball court or whatever we put up here, we'll need some storage on site. Um, but the First Nations people felt strongly that it would be, they would like to see a presence here to have ceremony. And so what we've designed at a high level, of course, because this would need to be designed in consultation with them and the city and the community, is this idea of, um, a trellis structure and seating area here. It's right at the bottom of Lake of the Woods Plaza. Um, we need to have something wonderful here and we need something warm and lovely. A lot of the people, not just First Nations, felt like we need a gathering place for the community and this being the heart of the community. What we're showing just, um, as a high-level idea was that we were told by the First Nations in our fabulous discussions with one of the elders that, you indeed, that the First Nations were actually 28 individual nations plus the Métis. And so what we're doing is we're using 28 and the Métis, 29 trellis structures. And each one could, could identify each First Nation as an independent nation separate from each other. And it comes together in a circle where we could have a fire pit that can be used by the whole community. Odenna at the Forks is actually designed by our office in 1997. It was designed for a multicultural facility for everyone. But because it was, it was built similar to this with good consultation and trying to be in touch with the earth and the location and, and the landscape, the indigenous people have taken it over. We think of it as a ceremonial place. But you see people like, um, cyclocross bike riders renting it out for, for a cyclocross track. So I mean, it has a multifaceted, uh, use. So we thought this would be a great location. Today, we, we originally put, um, receptacles in this area for food trucks and those should remain. However, today, as you all know, um, there's picnic tables that are thrown over a sodded swale, not very comfortable to sit in. So we've added a very small paved area that could, um, allow for proper picnic tables and shade area for people to, to picnic. We, we also, when we designed the Harborfront, back early, there was a play structure here that got removed as well. Over the multitude of design iterations, people have always wanted to bring more play features in here. And in the workshops, again, that was brought up. So this area here is, and we talked a lot about sustainability and bringing trees back into the Harborfront. So this here area is a forested area and a mulch hidden in here would be nature play. There's a play structure here. And today, we have, um, overland drainage. We would, we would naturalize that a bit more than just a sodded swale and we could have bridges going over and really create a really dynamic wooded sort of lovely, um, area that helps to create rooms as well on this vast Harborfront. It creates rooms between these different activities. It creates rooms between these different activities. Another very popular idea that came out of the workshops was the idea of the pier. The pier has reoccurred in early iterations. It allows us to move the MS Canora off the shoreline to be able to do some other neat things. It allows us to populate it with kiosks that local business people can set up. The market is bursting at the seams. They need an expansion area. But our idea isn't just expand for them on Wednesdays. It's the idea that we should have seasonal kiosks here all year round and all summer. So in the summer, these can be open six, seven days a week and help augment the pressure on the Wednesday market days and spread out some of that activity over the week. Also here is an exciting idea. It's called the resto bar. This is similar and fashioned off the common at the Forks, which I've mentioned that their common, it's that, I'm, many of you may have been there, it's a little bar where you go line up, you get your drink and you get to walk around inside and outside. It provides the Forks-North Portage Partnership money for capital projects. It's quite lucrative. However, we don't want to compete and our business analyst has told us that putting a resto bar here will just attract more people to downtown Canora, so shouldn't be competing with the restaurants. But we've gone further by proposing that, that this, you know, arm's length government agency that does alcohol would not maybe be great at food. So this would be a great, similar to the Forks, this could be a great place to have little pop-up restaurants that provide, that are put on by the local restaurateurs in the downtown Canora and they have some of their favorites served in the pop-up. And if you want their full menu, you can walk over to the restaurant. But this could be a really great venue where it's more like an eatery and it's run by the different local restaurants or even the summer trucks, food trucks that open up in the summer. This gives them a winter opportunity because this is a four-season building as we're proposing it. The next development that, oh, I'll come back to this. Well, maybe I won't. This is an exciting sort of high level idea that came out of one of the workshops. One of our attendees had suggested that a really neat idea would be a sauna. And wouldn't you know it, about two weeks ago, the Forks announced they're putting a sauna in. So I think they stole the idea from this fellow who happens to be the city engineer. I don't think he wanted me to tell you that, but too bad. Anyway, so we, we thought that is a really brilliant idea. And as it turns out, they have them in places not so far flung. They're very popular in Thunder Bay. But we went to a model of Northern Europe, Finland. They have them quite, quite a bit on waterfronts. And then the other issue we had was everybody wanted to swim at Harborfront who was at our workshops. Because as we all know, this area was filled in, therefore filled in, it was water right up to the back of these buildings once upon a time, that we actually have some steep shores here. It's not really the best. There's no beach entry for people to swim in and it's riprap and it's not very comfortable surface to create a beach environment. So to go with the sauna, which could have washrooms, we've come up with this idea of creating a deck, which I'll show you images from Europe where they've done this. They create a deck and put lifeguards on it and people swim right in the pool, in the lake water here. We can also build a bottom to part of it, which would allow a beach entry. So part of it could have a bottom so that it's age-friendly, meaning for seniors as well as children. And so we could even go as far as making this accessible. So that idea came out of one of the workshops. It's amazing what a group of people can come up with. Not the last, the second last, or maybe I'll go, I'll go last here. The second last item I'll bring up, I'll mention is the Wunorf. This is again, an idea that's come from Europe although it's popping up all over Canada. It's actually in, right at our office, we built the first Wunorf in Winnipeg. What it is, is a pedestrian-friendly roadway. It's where cars and pedestrians are treated more equally. There's special pavement to denounce that. The roadway is brought up to the elevation of the plaza area rather than the roadway. And cars still come through here, cars still park as they do today, same amount of parking as we had. The only difference is they slow right down and people can interact and walk more safely across because it slows traffic a little bit. And that will allow this area here to feel like a real, a real event area. The other fabulous thing that we can do with that is put collapsible ballards at either end, similar to what we did at either end of the, of the ten cell structure. If those of you who don't know, there's various collapsible ballards. It allows on KBI boats and trailers to parade through here. It allows on market days, trucks to come in here and deliver. We can do the same at either end of this. And then on Wednesdays, for example, we can set up additional market tents for market days. We can set up a stage on Harborfest for an additional venue. This can be set up for any festival event that comes up and requires sort of more space. And that's a sustainable use of this roadway infrastructure that we already have is to make it multi-use. And rather than taking away yet more parking for more markets, we can be more creative about how we integrate parking, a roadway and as a festival area at times. Now, the last major development here would be what we call the water pavilion and the water plaza. The idea and the name came from the, that fact that this was once water and built on that idea. We have this plaza space that could be dry or wet. You see a lot of those things popping up now. It allows us to have a dry area for events outside, but it also can, in the summer, have sprayers and misters to cool off the public and it's another way to interact with water. The idea here would be to have not a water play area in the same way a kid park. It's more of an all-ages misty, mist fountain area that would have, it's hard to see here, but we have some Indigenous script here and some Métis. But the idea is to have some interpretation about the lake. So this being a wonderful building and plaza that people can go to and learn about the lake environment and the history of the people who once lived here, or the people who lived here originally and still do, sorry. But also looking at sort of the types of grants and partnerships out there, green infrastructure is, is a real important thing that our workshop wanted to study. Our workshop people, the people attending the workshops really wanted to see sustainable development here. And we thought this would be a gem. It would be a model of sustainability. The building could collect gray water that would be infiltrated into cells before going out to the lake. And with this seating area over here, people could actually see this in progress. We can collect water off the roof. We can collect water from the parking lot and all of that can get cleansed through these cells before going to the, into the lake. This building could also have solar power. It could have waste management, recycling. I mean, it could be the whole enchilada. Now, the government of Canada, of course, has money towards these kinds of developments and we thought this would be a really neat building to explore and see if we can leverage monies to, to develop it. The facility itself, people identified wanting a four-season building that we could have maybe pop-up markets in that people could rent out for a wedding or another event. The Indigenous community talked about wanting to see their artifacts away, out of the museum and taken into the building so that people, visitors and residents of Canora who visit Harborfront will get to see their artifacts. So this is a multifunctional building. There's also a boardwalk that continues along here that would have seating. The idea would be that this resto bar, similar to the common at the Forks, worked with the Liquor Commission there to allow people to have a certain area to be able to walk and have a beverage and walk around the site. Now, I, I went really long, so let's get to maybe some of the, quickly through the 3D, can I show some of the 3D images that display some of this or have we gone too long?
I think, take a couple minutes if you're sure.
Okay.
You've been building up to it.
I've been building up. You saw the plan. So if I could work this a little better, here, let's see. Sorry, I'm much better with the mouse. I have like early onset, onset issues with my wrists, sorry. This is just a quick view of what McLeod, McLeod Park could look like with the tugboats, some interpretation perhaps with navigational aspects. You know, just refreshing the outside of the washrooms and trellis to make it look more welcoming, some picnic tables, some tiered seating. So small interventions really to bring, because a lot of people felt there wasn't enough washrooms and we said, well, there is. People kind of forget that there is washrooms right there at McLeod Park. This is showing, displaying you the angled parking on Lakeview Drive with the sinuous boardwalk mimicking the one in front of the Harborfront with sculpture. We're hoping similar to some other projects like this one. You can see this sculpture displayed here. That's by Indigenous artist. You can see now, as you walk down the boardwalk, you start to see the kiosks and expanded docks. Here's another more aerial view of that area with the kiosks and expanded docks for big boat parking, which was identified as a need, that we need more and that we need big boat parking. This is, I'll keep going. This is just a view of that potential development near the roundabout. Let's see, some court sports and activities that we can see happening at the ten cell structure. I quite like this image. Again, these were done in not in a photo realistic way because we want to keep in mind that these are master plan ideas. But here's a view right at the ten cell structure, Lake of the Woods Plaza and this gathering circle with the fire pit, sitting area with the food trucks, a little bit of green to break up the spaces and then you can start to see this idea of the pier. Here's another image, 3D model of the, I hope everyone, I wasn't looking up at the screen, probably not big enough for you guys. Is that better? So an idea of what this might look like with the ten cell structure today, a pier with a restaurant bar, sauna, parking for boats, the MS Canora particularly, and seasonal kiosks that can provide us with activity every day of the week. And also, what I have missed is you can see it here, it looks like people are skating. The idea is to start to look similar to my, the previous presenter regarding skate trails mimic again after some other great developments. I'm looking for our winter shot, here it is. Some other great developments around Canada is, and you guys have done some wonderful winter festivals with hockey rinks. We spaced out the new docks as well as the pier. They create a nice area to include some pond hockey, some skating and warming huts and bonfires and fishing shacks. These are all from the community wanting to see this. We're hoping and working with the city that by building some of these other elements, it can help with the ice. And when the ice isn't doing well, just as it isn't in Winnipeg this year, we're not going to, we're probably not going to get any skate trails this year because we have poor ice. We have skating today under the tent. We could have skating here and we could create skate trails that connect them onto the pier. So we can start to look at landscape trails as well. But you can see the difference of Harborfront now with some activity in the winter with some four-season facilities. We can start to see activity here in the winter. This building can act as skate rentals, it can act as warm shelter as well. The fire pit will be a great asset to that. So now to budget very quickly. Probably the phasing is in this document as well and you can have a look. We estimated a phasing that was based mainly on, on the business development lens, but of course, it will depend what grants become available, what partnerships that can be leveraged. And we've listed some in the document. But this whole project, not including of course, the two elements that were considered to be by selling off land, we haven't included any revenue in here from selling or leasing land. And not including the Water Street intersection that's been priced out in a previous project. So it's 19.8 million for all of the things that we displayed and another four and a half of the Water Street intersection was completed as well. And I think I should open to questions because I've gone on a long time. I apologize, this is a 50-page report that took a year and a half to do. So thank you for sitting through all of it, everyone.
It's pretty hard to capture all the public consultation and feedback.
Yes.
And it's on our, it's on council's agenda for later as well.
Good. And, and there's an appendix that has meeting notes in it, the full parking study. So the report itself is only 45 pages, but the appendix is massive.
Any questions? Chris?
Maybe I missed it on that, but is there an area put out for whether it's a bus stop or a shuttle or?
Some, I, you know, and I, I'm sorry, but we didn't go into details of locating them, but we identified that those would be part of the development plan. So, but a bus loop would be an important one. Sorry, I was just looking for the page that does that. A bus loop would be important part of this and I didn't mention the parking. So by, the parking aspect was, oh, here's some other amenities. So the idea is there's going to be, there should be a water and land shuttle. So land shuttle, similar to the one on market days, that would, when you intensify the Harborfront in this way, once we get there, we're going to need a lot of parking. So what we would need is, you know, a land shuttle that could take people to say the rec center and, and bring them over to, to, similar to what Winnipeg has, they have a sprint. But in the parking study and in this report, you can see it's actually only a 10-minute walk to walk to the mall from Harborfront. And especially in the summer season when the climate is, climate is, is on the positives, it's not actually a far distance. And we found, lucky enough, our offices worked on Main Street as, as well as Second Street and the First Street Extension. And what we found, and I think you would agree, is as soon as we did the streetscaping on Second Street, residents, not just tourists, residents would now walk Main Street and turn the corner and walk Second Street because it was an attractive walk and you could grab a coffee, grab a snack, pop into the shops. It really changes the environment. Now that we've created the First Street Extension, we've really created fingers into the parts of our downtown that seemed like it was an obstacle to get to. Now we have a nice straight shoot all the way down Lake of the Woods Plaza to the Harborfront. All those things will help. But in our study, we identified that by increasing, we've increased the parking on Lakeview Drive, we've added a parking lot. The First Street Extension has added hundreds of parking stalls in addition to the parking, the off-street parking. There is, we've, in this plan, including the First Street Extension, we have more parking than we've lost at, at South Parking Lot. So it's just a reallocation. Now, we've left parking on Harborfront because that's super important. It's super important for accessibility. We still need people to deliver goods here. And the idea is for people, say monthly parkers who work on Bernier and want to park close when it's cold, those stalls in the winter months can be rented out, but in the summer, provide them a spot for their way to allow residents of Kiwatin to be able to drive in, park and spend money, you know? So there is quite a large parking and other amenities strategy in here that I can't go over in detail, but there's also the proposal of a, of a water shuttle as well. We've improved active transportation. So all those things should play into the overall plan. And there's also zoning recommendations in the document.
Thank you. Are we okay? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for listening to me for more than my allotted time.
Okay. Yep, we'll head right into the formal agenda. Item 1.1, October financial statements. And if folks want to leave or have to leave, please feel free. John, are you going to highlight this, please?
We are. I didn't see, in analyzing this, I didn't see a lot of changes from the September. Still on track there, water and sewer. They're always a month, a month behind showing on the statements there, so that, that made sense. Were there any questions that any, anybody had on any of the variances?
I didn't see, analyzing this, I didn't see a lot of changes from the September. Still on track there, water and sewer. They're always a month, a month behind showing on the statements there, so that, that made sense. Were there any questions that any, anybody had on any of the variances?
Any questions on financial statements? Sharon?
I, I see that the billing has come into the utilities now and on the norm last year. And it seems, just going back to what it was, fifteen thousand to over what we had actually planned to report.
I believe it was even more than fifteen thousand. Overall, we had budgeted.
Yeah, well, it's nice to see that caught up.
Just didn't know.
Yeah, absolutely. But I think we did a good job of guessing.
That would be Jane.
Okay. Any further questions for John? Andrew?
Yeah, just on the, I guess it's on the expenses on water and sewer. The variant, I'm looking at the variance and it's a little bit better than it was in two thousand eighteen, year to date to October. Do you see a problem there? Or like, are we gonna, are we gonna be able to fall in line with the, I think it's twenty, it was twenty-four, just short of twenty-five percent of the variance for the balance of the year?
Are you looking at any, any department specifically?
Yeah, water and sewer, on the expense side.
Oh, you're looking at the total of all of the departments?
Yes. Yeah, I've paged, I don't know.
So, we have twenty, twenty-four percent remaining to the end of the year. And last year, we had twenty-seven percent, is that correct?
Is there, I'm just, is there gonna be an issue there to stay within that? Or do you see any, like, is it, it looks, it looks fine from previous years. I was just wondering if we're gonna be able to contain that.
I think, I think a lot of expenses do come in towards the end of the year. So, this might be even, and Beaman could say as well, that I think a lot of, a lot of expenses or a lot of invoices will come in, in the January and early February. And that's kind of what we, make sure we get the cutoff for all of those payables. As long as all of those payables, I know right now it looks quite favorable at twenty-five percent at, sitting at the end of October, but it gets closer to our actuals once, once we hit that January and February time. If your question is that, are we gonna have a large, large surplus there? I don't necessarily foresee that, but.
Well, that, yeah, it wasn't really about whether it'd be a large surplus. I'm just wondering if there, if that was a reasonable, like, that twenty-five, or almost twenty-five percent to be close to it. If there's a surplus or excess, that'd be great. But I'm just more concerned about staying on budget.
And I, I think we're still within, within that at this point.
Any further questions? Chris?
Yeah, the, my computer here isn't working too good, so it may be bouncing all over the place here. But the one thing I was supposed to bring up at the transfer station, we call that the Barski Station now, and people want to know why it was called Barski. Why isn't it called the Transfer Station? So, I just wonder if we can end up calling it, because nobody remembers. Well, that's old timers, you remember the Barski store there, but must, might be something there. But on the financials, at thirty-eight thousand, it's not yet recorded on the Kuwaiton Arena, the interest, you know what that's?
The Kuwaiton Arena.
The interest on the debt?
Yes.
Yeah. So, yeah, we record that at the year end.
Yeah, so that's, that's the interest based, I believe that was the roof, right? That we debt financed?
There's a few projects in Kuwaiton.
A few projects on the Kuwaiton Arena we debt financed. That interest portion just gets recorded at the end of the year. So, I make sure to, I, I state that in the report, just so that you know that expenses aren't understated, well, I guess they are, so expenses are understated on that in the actual financials.
But at the end of the year, it'll?
Yes, it'll show that interest.
So, what we're trying to do, and frustration to all of us and John's working on it as well, is that the statements, program we have right now for the statements is not easy to work with. And we have to get Jim involved, Jim Carevitzos, to help us, which really shouldn't be here. We should be able to go in and move what we want, but it's too complicated. And so, we're possibly looking at another system in the future to help us move things out. I'd like to move that interest down to the bottom, so that it doesn't come into effect when we look at our operating numbers.
It would actually be really nice to get into monthly budgeting, so that we don't see these large seasonal differences that I have to explain all the time. In the wintertime, there's, you'll see a big surge in winter control maintenance, right? And then nothing in the summer, which makes sense. But it would be nice if we could budget that way, so that we see those expenses come in at the times that they are, that we expect them to come in. If that makes sense.
Okay. We good? We'll bring that forward next week. Section three five seven, are you doing that, John or Charlotte? Charlotte, thanks.
We have three properties under appeal under section three five seven for a total of eighteen hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-one cents. The most significant of the properties was a reassessment due to a fight.
Any questions for Charlotte on that report? Okay, we'll bring it forward next week. Do you just want to continue, Charlotte?
Sure.
Kuwait Medical Clinic property taxes, we're asking for the cancellation of the property taxes and making that building exempt. And right now, the Canora Healthcare Center is exempt as well, so we're putting it on the same field.
Just a quick, on the amount, and I can't recall the number, does that? How about the?
I can tell you.
I mean, it wouldn't change my support for it, I was just wondering, I, I know it's accounted for in the, assuming.
And it, as you know, it's city property. And the only reason that there are property taxes is that we, that triggers property taxes.
Okay, we okay? John, twenty twenty capital. And in, in asking you to present.
We skipped write-offs.
Oh, sorry. Write-offs. Thank you.
Sorry.
That's why you look after the finance.
So, the, if I can continue with write-offs report here, this summarizes a listing of inactive accounts that are eligible for write-off under the city policy. And basically this, and as written in the report there, account shall be written off on a calendar year basis. Accounts deemed to become inactive during one calendar year shall be held on the records for the entire following calendar year. Write-off shall appear in the second year following the year the account is deemed to become inactive. And I think there's a couple of things to note on this one. This is a lot smaller than in previous years because we're no longer carrying hydro. The other thing to note, the, the big thing to note with this report is, this doesn't mean we're writing these off and no longer collecting, like, a lot of these portions, even in this thirty-two hundred here, have already gone to the credit bureau. So, we're still actively trying to collect these, this is for accounting purposes that these get written off.
Okay, move forward on that? Okay, thank you. Hey, the capital budget, John?
Okay.
Understanding that council did have a meeting on the capital budget as well.
Absolutely. And this report here is just, just recommending to you pass the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four capital budget based on the changes we made in our last capital budget meeting, as well as those, those couple changes I highlighted in that email out to council. If there's any questions on any of those or any of the capital projects?
You good? Carry it forward for next week? Okay, thank you. Okay, the next one is the one point six, the OPP Annual Building, Building. And it's on the agenda today for discussion for the main reason if council has any questions that we could take down and forward to the OPP Municipal Policing Bureau, who will be here next week along with Jeff Duggan. And if Heather had the opportunity, she would forward those questions in advance, so they're prepared for any questions we may have. But that doesn't prevent the discussion taking place next week as well. So, if anybody has any questions that they would like to put forward, could they please get them to Heather? Chris?
Do you think we could ask them if we can get a few more years written down there? Like, we have the twenty nineteen and the twenty twenty. But could we go back maybe another five years or ten years to see what the policing has cost each year?
Yeah, it comes in the, so he looked at the police services board report that comes and everything, but it only costs us back, and with ten years. It goes back right to two.
I notice here, one of the, what is required at the city are three things. The decision whether we're going to renew the contract, the decision on the length of the term of the agreement, choice of three, four, five, or six. Okay.
I think, from my perspective too, with the resource people here, it's a lot easier to get into the dialogue and, and ask the questions and our staff as well. Get the specifics of the format, particularly the stats and all. Okay, we can move forward? Okay, thank you. All right, health and safety policy amendments? Hillary? Thank you.
I'm stepping in for Bruce again. So, I'll do my best with the policies, but we're just working through our policy review. So, Bruce has put forward more health and safety policies. Were there any questions about the policies that he put forward? I think a lot of them were just touching up the terms, making sure we had the proper terminology in them and getting new dates. Was there any other questions about the health and safety ones? And I think the next one on the agenda was the HR policy updates. So, those are my policy updates, two came forward. And I just wanted to know if there's any questions about those ones as well?
Anybody have any questions on, Chris?
The employee assistance policy, you put it back in the manual, because of orientation, they, they receive all that information then?
Yeah, so we make our EAP services available. We tell people orientation, when they meet with payroll, they go through all that information with them and how to access it. We have cards that we can hand out to people that usually supervisors and HR always have. So, it's a service that is provided through our benefits. So, we just felt that we don't need an actual policy on it because it's a service through our benefits and we just give the information to staff.
You okay? All right.
All right. Thank you.
Didn't hurt at all, did it? Thanks, Hillary. Hey, with the Canora, next online is Canora District Chamber of Commerce request?
So, Mayor Reeder received a request from the, from the District Chamber of Commerce to have a member of council, elect him and help me forward. It's not necessarily an opportunity to get forward, it was more of a presence, I think it would be just to have a member of council there. So, we do have a member of council, we regularly attend, Volco attends the biz meetings.
The reason that Councilor Volco attends the biz is that the city collects a levy from the businesses, each of the businesses in the Harbortown biz. And then, and then it turns that money back to biz to administer. So, I would imagine that's more of an observation, watchdog sort of role. I really don't understand what council could bring to the chamber or what the chamber could bring to the council. That I'd like to see, something like that clarified. It might be better if we were actually, if the city is looking, or the council, or the chamber, pardon me, is looking to have information of what the city is doing. That could possibly be fairly well done by a staff member who's aware of whatever else is going on in the city. It's a good idea, or it's, it's an idea, but I'm, I don't see the value in it, quite honestly.
Further comments or questions?
Yeah, I'm somewhat intrigued by this. I think I look at it, I take a different approach to it. I think, I think it's a valid, I think, I think the business community that, especially nowadays, and that we don't have the larger industries per se in the community. And I'm a big proponent of the small community, because I have business. If there's somebody we can help and disseminate information, I mean, I would be for it. I, I want some clarity on the, what is required, so you don't go in there blind. But, but, I, the idea, the concept, and I, I think I, I think it's a great idea. And again, that's, that's one person's opinion. I follow your thought.
Um, Chrissy?
I like the suggestion that came up just in the preliminary discussions of doing maybe a rotation of more than one of us, especially because it looks like this is going to fall on the same day as council quite often, does five P M. the second Tuesday of the month. If we're for it, I'd like to be part of a rotation.
Just a comment myself. The recommendation is not asking for an appointment to sit on the chamber board. It's a communication, and I, I tend to, I tend to agree with Councilor Goss to a certain extent. It may not be necessary to have someone attend regularly, it may be a staff person. And I would think it would depend a lot on what's on the agenda. So, if it's a rotating counselor, if it's something to do, sorry, if it's something to do with economic development or some question, it may be an opportunity to invite a council member to that, that meeting to talk. But as far as a permanent appointment to it, I don't know that that's necessary. Because we are, we are a member, we can go to any meeting now, members, so we're there. But that, that would be at the will of council. Sharon?
At one time, there used to be a chamber rep on the Economic Development Commission. I would suggest that there's more of a tie-in to the work of the Economic Development Commission and Tourism Committee work than just general council business. So, there may be an opportunity there to just even invite them to, if they're not sitting on the commission, just, you know, here's when we have our meetings. They would be invited to the commission meeting, to the tourism committee meetings. And if they would have questions or suggestions, that might be a more appropriate venue for them, might be more utility to have that kind of relationship happen. I'm just throwing that out there, something that the commission might want to, the tourism committee might want to consider and take something like that back to them, because I think there might be more benefit to doing something like that.
There is a tourism, there is a chamber rep on the tourism committee.
So, in my, my thing, I think that would probably be the best kind of relationship between the city and the chamber is through that venue. I, I don't care one way or the other what happens, I'm, I'm just saying that that might be an idea for dialogue.
I think that the two, or three options, I guess, are on the table. If I correct me if I'm wrong, one is have nobody go. Second is to rotate it, such as was suggested. And the third is maybe to do it by invitation from the chamber, depending on the topic, or on occasion having a lot of city staff attend the meeting to, for example, if we're in operating budget, what's happening maybe at that point. At the end of the day, what they're basically looking for is communication and links to it. What's the will of, Sharon?
Well, it, when you say that, it's interesting, you say it because perhaps that's more of a liaison with our economic development officer than with the counselor. Having somebody coming to the table, there might be more value in having our EDC coming to, to them. I'm just throwing that out there as a suggestion.
I just want to be cautious, will we add on to the staff's place?
Well, I'm trying to be cautious as to what we add to council's place.
I hear you. Chris?
I agree with Counselor Smith there. I think we have enough different committees. Remember, a number of years ago, we had a lot more committees and we kind of streamlined them. One of the groups was a Coney Island residence there. So, now if we go with this, what's to stop the South Park residents or the Minto residents wanting people to come to the meetings? I think we'd be setting a terrible precedent, appointing somebody to each one of these requests.
Sharon?
And just one final comment, and Heather can validate this or whatever. I thought that we were actually supposed to be doing a review of all our committees during this term to ensure that, you know, there's good reasons for them, with an eye to looking at where we should be sitting and not sitting. So, when councillor Van Wollencamp said that, I thought, yeah, we're supposed to be reviewing the existing committees we have already. Was that what we said at the beginning of term, Heather?
So, we had that review at the end of the last term of council to provide a solid foundation for the new council meeting. It's not fair for the new council to have that foundation, but it's something that we can trust to be all in council. So, at the end of this term of council, we will do some, 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 uh, more and more, uh, for, for, for.
And I just, I just, sure, Percy, go ahead.
So, just in discussing this, I'm thinking also, we don't have an official chamber rep who attends biz, but they usually do have a presence, usually at least one person who's a member of the chamber is there. So, maybe this is something I could take back to biz in that regard, too. It was helpful when we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, it was just sort of informally organized, but the biz board was there and I was there in that capacity and the chamber board was there. So, perhaps maybe if the biz board and the chamber board just meet up more often or make that more of a regular thing, doesn't have to be monthly. And then I can be part of it, I'm a big board anyway, so.
I can, I, I was chair of this for five years. We actually, we're interested in this, this is a few times.
That's right.
Okay, then, can we?
We just, we just, we just need some slack.
Percy, you're gonna be at that table, aren't you? Thank you. All right, moving on to Todd, fire dispatch services agreement.
So, we're up for review, our review, renewal of our agreement. So, just a little bit of history for everybody. Back in 2008, previous chief, Warren Brinkman, was tasked to do a pretty large review on, on dispatching services. And, and, and in 2008, we selected Central Ambulance Communication Services, which is located here in Canora, and for, for several reasons. And a lot of it was cost, because they are local. Uh, and they provide, CAC provides, or Central Ambulance provides dispatching services pretty well for the entire Northwest, except for Thunder Bay at the present time. So, so they cover a large area, actually, they cover the largest area in the, in the province. So, in September, we were asked, our, our agreements all are coming to an end at the end of the year. So, we, we were asked at our Mutual Aid Association meeting to, to look at our agreements and, and, and look at renewing for the end of the year. And that's all the fire departments in the Northwest. And CAC came and did a presentation and went through all the, a bunch of the agreements. And we found out that there were several agreements throughout the Northwest. So, at our association, I was tasked with making it into one agreement. So, I worked a lot with all the communities across the Northwest and the pride, and the fire marshal, fire departments to come up with a, with a single agreement. And really, it's mirrored on Canora's, because we had the most comprehensive. We use, we have the most calls and we use it the most. So, anyhow, in the end, we, we have one agreement now for the, for the Northwest. And it's, that's been presented and accepted by CAP, by CAC. And the biggest change we have since 2009, we've been at $40 a call. And, and we've done it, we're doing an increase to $50 a call. So, not, not a huge increase. It affects Canora the most, because we have the most calls, of course. But it's about a $5,000 increase a year for us, so.
Any questions for Todd? It's a vital service.
It is, yeah. We're, we're very fortunate to have, you know, central ambulance here locally, because they're a level, level two communications team, which is, which, there's only three in the province. So, there's a lot of training and testing that went in with that. And, and being local, for us, it's, keeps the cost down. It's about a, a third of what some other departments are paying in Southern Ontario. They're paying around $150 to $200 a call, so.
So, if council's okay, we'll bring that forward next week? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Todd.
You're welcome.
Operations and infrastructure, 3.1, Dryden recycle college agreement. And Mukesh, I think you were gonna talk a bit to that. Thanks.
Okay, so like the city of Canora haul our recycles to Winnipeg. We have like a, a morphine, we don't have a morphine city, so we haul, haul our recycle to Winnipeg. In 2018, we haul almost 1500 tons of recycles to Winnipeg. And we also helped city of Dryden to haul their recycle to Winnipeg. In 2018, last year, we haul almost like a 57 loads of recycle, Dryden recycle to Winnipeg. And like, currently, we have like five years agreement between city of Dryden and city of Canora to haul their recycles to Winnipeg. And like, I know, like, we have a dedicated truck and we have a three trailer, like a self-compassion trailer. And we have a, like, a dedicated truck driver to haul the recycles, right? So, the, the agreement, like, the last date of agreement is December 31st of 2019. And like, maybe two, three weeks ago, we met with the city of Dryden staff and decided to continue this agreement. This is the best, the best practice to do. It will help both cities to haul our recycles, because they have one recycle trailer and we have two recycle trailer. So, one recycle trailer always stay on the highway and one recycle trailer stay in the Canora and one recycle trailer stay in the Dryden. It is working very fine. So, like, I, like, now I'm recommending to extend the agreement for end of five years. That's why there is a report to council.
There was an increase in?
Yeah, there is, yeah, like, yeah. Like, in 2000, like, in 2015, when we did our, like, agreement, the rate was 1125. And now there is an increase, I'm afraid, due to increase in the fuel cost kind of thing, right? So, the rate of haulage per trip will be 1275. And, and there is a scalise, like, escalation clause in the agreement that every year we will review the cost of the fuel, right? And if there is an increase in the cost of the fuel, our maintenance, the rate will increase accordingly. So, if you have any questions.
Any questions from council for this? There's a long history between Canora and Dryden and recycling.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll bring that forward for next week then. Thanks, Mukesh. Hey, Matt, Fourth Avenue South parking amendment.
Yeah, we're looking to have council authorize an amendment to the City of Canora Traffic Regulation Bylaw, number 180215. This is to include changes to no parkings on a seasonal basis to the Fourth Avenue South. There's a diagram included in the report. It's about for 45 meters on the east side to reduce hazard and, and unsafe conditions.
If anybody needs any information on that, I, I can speak to it, because I grew up at the bottom of that hill and completely understand the concern of the neighbors with respect to parking on the hill.
Chris?
Do we ever run this past the OPP at all before it's passed?
I don't believe this, this was run past OPP. I believe our roads division D took out, took and inspected the site. And then the report was done based on, on his inspection.
Speed limits and how we go through the police, don't we?
Us.
Get their old gate to change a speed limit?
Just going for picture. Yeah, we're, we're just looking to change the, the parking.
Yeah.
We okay to move this forward?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Matt. Okay, our next one is emergency sewer and water purchase. Beeman was to be here, but he probably got called out. Are you gonna do it?
Yeah, well, he, I'll try, but he had an appointment, so.
But Matt, just for your information, we did have, Jeff did provide council with a pretty thorough overview of the reasons and the rationale behind this. So, if you just, if you wanna highlight it, that would be great.
Sure, and, and some of those highlights are the $285,000 real, reallocation plus applicable taxes to be funded from the sewer and water reserves. This is an emergency replacement. It's a requirement based on OREG 17003, Schedule 6, for drinking water and MECP regulations and guidelines on wastewater. And from what I understand, they have a company signed up that has assured them that they'll have it in place before January 19th, 2020.
And I think the big catalyst for this was the previous company issue that they were terminating.
Sorry.
It made a pretty critical.
Current.
Thanks.
If they have something to say.
Thanks, I think, I think it's six months of, thanks, Andrew.
And just to add to that, I met with, and, and I know we are going with Commission Communication Canada, but I've had a meeting this week and I know Beeman's followed up with the same company. And there's several out there to ensure that maybe possibilities of this in the future aren't, we're more aware just going into it. So, we'll have options possibly in the future and keep tabs with these other companies.
And I think that the, the cost came in quite significantly lower than when Jeff first briefed us on this, because, yeah, it was way, way higher. So, this is kind of like a good news story, because it's quite a bit less expensive.
Okay, we move that one ahead for next week? Okay, thanks again, Matt. Thanks for jumping into the, for, eh. Okay, community services. Stace, do you wanna just over your report, please?
Yeah, thanks very much. And I'm joined here today with some members of Canora Harvest, so if you have any direct questions, guys can feel free to jump in at any time. This is about approving an extension of the agreement with Canora Harvest to continue to operate the Herbert Michael Farm in the Millennial Park in Key Waitan. As part of this report, there was a, a diagram that is attached. And what Canora Harvest is looking at is to extend their agreement with the city, because they've had such tremendous success in 2019. In fact, they were able to harvest 324 kilograms of crop from the, from the garden. And that was spread across 27 different crops that they grew. It was a wonderful success. In the diagram, what you'll see is, Canora Harvest is in the process of looking to different funding bodies to try to get support. And under that effort, they're looking at three different scenarios whereby, you know, if they are able to get all the financial means that they need, that they'll be able to expand to a certain extent. So, I didn't provide you with three diagrams, I provided you with one, which is the most extensive one, which would see the garden footprint increase. And with that, to help sort of make things more effective and efficient for them, there's a couple of small structures that they're talking about, like a rain retention area, an area where there's a compost toilet, a shed, so that they can start storing their tools and things like that, because right now, they're having to haul stuff back and forth. So, it's just to make the overall operation more efficient, like, for it. With that, of course, they want more people to get involved in the community, so it's really good news, though.
Any questions from anyone, Sharon?
What did they, what did you do with the harvest?
So, primarily, we had volunteers who come to our meeting, we had the garden department. And so, just whoever came to harvest, we had to take it home. But we also sold them small enough to the Hungry Pug Restaurant, and we needed a small enough. And some of it that we had stored, we did preservation more prospect, which is, and, and.
That's great. I'm glad to see that my nighttime garden rating didn't impact the harvest.
But it's all good.
I was thinking the same thing.
I was quiet on camera. Good work, thank you.
Any other questions? I have just one, Stace. Last year, we had a bit of a concern for the residents of the location of the garden. With the success that you had this summer, I, I would assume that the tenants in the building are.
Yeah, I can let Jake speak to the consultation process going forward and, you know, what sort of the vibe was in terms of interacting with them over the course of the summer.
Sure, thank you.
Honestly, there wasn't a whole lot of interaction with them. We've kind of been trying to reach out to get a bit more of a sense of how they feel about it, but haven't received a response back yet, so. No negative response, but no positive response either. So, I think our initial contact with them, they said they were supportive of it, they just didn't want it right in front of their building. So, we're kind of assuming that going forward and not expanding it in front of their building. But we hope to get more solid contact with them, like, to their, 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 they will make progress.
This is a good news story. Any no further questions? Okay, we'll bring that forward next week. Thank you. Developmental Services, harbor front development business plan. Adam and Megan, who?
I'm not. This report is complimentary to the presentation by Congressman, Congressman earlier at this meeting.
Megan, could you come up and so we can, sorry, just wanna get it in?
So, the report outlines the background as well as the scope of work that was undertaken in the plan. It talks a little bit at a very high level about the process in terms of community engagement as well as the framework that was identified by workshop participants that led to the development of the final draft. It also talks a little bit about the budget for the plan itself. So, the total budget approved by council was $100,000. And we did receive funding through both NOHFC and FedNOR in support of this project. I know I mentioned it earlier, this, but this really is a high-level master plan, similar to other projects that we've undertaken in the past, such as beaches, parks, and trails, as well as the downtown revitalization plan. So, really, the intent of this strategy is to be delivered over time in phases with appropriate partnerships and financial contributions secured in advance of proceeding with any work. So, the, the report itself, or sorry, the, the business development plan identifies each of the individual projects in 13 zones and does also recommend some proposed phasing, again, similar to what we saw in the downtown revitalization plan, so that it can be delivered over time.
Any questions? Because I think the recommendation before us is to adopt the plan.
Yes.
By adopting the plan, it gives the opportunity to the city to apply for funding against the base plan.
Yes, so the recommendation that we're looking for today is that council endorses this plan through adoption formally.
Council prepared, we can bring it forward next week? Any question?
So, there is some concern about the plan just being received.
Okay.
And with a more formalized plan, we're each basing the back. And I understand you can speak to that, but there has been a few members of council offering to, to, like, to see that, to block, to, to.
Okay, with that, with the change in terminology? All right, we'll bring it forward with that amendment to the chair.
I just wanted to say that I actually like the plan and I like the way you prioritize it. I would prioritize some projects right in the same way, in the same fa, fashion. So, I look forward to the upcoming reports and how we're gonna move that forward. Thanks, any different?
Okay, good, thank you. All right, we will close this part of the meeting.
Resolution number two, moved by myself and seconded by councillor Fargay, that this meeting not be adjourned to a closed session at 10:50 a.m. And further, that pursuant to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended, authorization is hereby given for committee to move into a closed session to discuss items pertaining to the following. One, personal matters about an identifiable individual. Two matters, views and pack board appointment.
All those in favor? Okay. Take a three-minute break? I'd appreciate it.
Would you rather sit down?
I, I would appreciate it. Hey, we'll start the public meeting. Hey, we, we'll start the, uh, public meeting. Public meeting to discuss a proposed zoning bylaw amendment, uh, read D.14-19-10, 310 Matheson Street, South, the Boathouse. Purpose of public meetings is to present planning applications, excuse me, in a public forum as required by the Planning Act. Following presentations by the applicant and our city planning staff, any planning advisory committee members will be afforded an opportunity to speak, and at that time, the meeting will then be open to the public for comments and questions. The public is encouraged to read the planning report in advance of the public meeting, which may clarify questions in advance of the public meeting. Interested persons are requested to give their name and address for recording in the minutes. There is also a sign-in sheet for interested members of public at the back of the room. Personal information collected as a result of this public hearing and on the forms provided at the meeting are collected under the authority of the Planning Act, excuse me, and will be used to assist in making a decision on this matter. All names, addresses, opinions, and comments may be collected and may be formed part of the minutes which will be available to the public. Questions regarding this collection should be forwarded to the city clerk. Notice was given by publishing in the Daily Minor News, which in the opinion of the clerk of the city of Canora is of sufficiently general circulation in the area to which the proposed bylaw amendment would apply, and that it would give the public reasonable notice of the public meeting. Notice was also provided by mail to every owner of property within 120 meters of the subject property, prescribed persons and public bodies, and posted online on the City of Canora portal. An appeal may be made to the local planning appeal tribunal not later than 20 days after the day that the giving of notice as required by Section 34, Bracket 18, is completed by either the applicant, or person, or public body who, before the bylaw is passed, makes oral submissions at a public meeting, or written submissions to the council, and may not be added as a party unless, in the opinion of the tribunal, there are reasonable grounds to do so. A notice of appeal can be filed with the city clerk with the tribunal's required fee of $300. An appeal may only be made on the basis that the bylaw is inconsistent with the policy statement issued under subsection 3, Bracket 1, fails to conform with or conflicts with the provincial plan, or fails to conform to an applicable official plan. No decisions are made at public meetings concerning applications unless otherwise noted. The public meeting is held to gather a public opinion. The council of the city of Canora will have the opportunity to consider a decision at a future meeting of council. Herein, the applicant will have the opportunity to speak on behalf of their application, and the city planning staff will provide a summation of the report and recommendation, after which anyone who wishes to speak either for or against the application will be given the opportunity to do so, and a record will be kept of all comments. If anyone wishes to receive the notice of the decision of council, please leave your name and address with the city clerk. And if anyone has a cell phone, please either turn it off or use the vibrate option only. So council declaration of pecuniary interest in general nature thereof, on today's agenda or from a previous meeting, haven't seen none, or from a meeting at which a member was not in attendance, have not seen any. Item number one, applicant presentation. Uh, the applicant or representative will present their planning application, and I believe Alex? Okay. So Melissa.
Yeah.
You have the floor.
Okay, thanks, uh, Rory, for the introduction. And I'd like to thank, uh, the councillors and mayor for, uh, allowing me to teleconference in. My, my client is most appreciative, and he didn't wanna pay for my flight up to Canora, so, uh, um, anyway, this is a, a great opportunity. So just briefly, I'm going to introduce the, the purpose of this, uh, bylaw amendment, um, with the proposed remedy, and I'll speak a little further to it. So just reviewing what was in the, uh, outline by the planning department. The purpose of this bylaw amendment is review of the proposed bylaw in consideration of the, uh, boathouse property to create a legal nonconforming use, um, of the boathouse restaurant from the parken, uh, as requirements of the bylaw 323.3. Now, for those who may or may not be totally familiar with that, that bylaw currently in the new, um, 2015 bylaws requires that new restaurants in the city of Canora have a minimum, uh, parking spot of, um, 10 spots per, um, 100 square meters. So the boathouse is approximately 185 square meters, so that would equate to 18 parking stalls. Um, now, presently, the arrangement is that, um, because owners of the boathouse restaurant, um, are presently leasing the property from the corporation which owns the bigger Sh- Shoppers parking lot, or parken, or sorry, company, um, they're leasing the area on the northeast corner of Third Street, uh, South. So that's the present arrangement. Um, so in the future, once the lease arrangement is extinguished, and it would be extinguished at the time that the, um, consent for severance is eventually approved, then the, um, lease would extinguish on the current parking situation. Uh, however, in speaking with my client, um, they intend to continue to honor that current parking situation for a period of time until such that, that they have another use for the broader residual shoppers' property. So while we're seeking relief at the moment, this is not going to be extinguished overnight, and it may continue for a period of another six months or possibly several years. But the client wants maximum flexibility to manage their overall shoppers' property, and hence the need to give consideration to the parking requirements. Now, this would be consistent with every other, what we're proposing would be consistent with every other restaurant in the city of Canora, in the downtown core area, inasmuch as no other restaurant, with the exception of the Restaurante, when they have a few parking spots. No other restaurant in the downtown core has, uh, individual parken, vehicle parken on site. Now, it's interesting with this property, the boathouse property, they have full, uh, parken for boats in the summer. Um, so they have a comp- they have invested in and placed docks in front of their property, uh, and they can hold approximately 15 to 20 boats at a time during the summer months. So this provides, um, adequate parking for people that come in from the lake, but we would need consideration for parking on shore and relief from the present bylaw. And in review of the future, when the current parking on the northeast corner of, um, Third Street East is no longer available, there is parking, available parking on Main Street, Third Street South, and Matheson Street to accommodate, uh, the vehicles and patrons that will be, um, uh, going to the boathouse restaurant. So that's it in a nutshell. Um, I would welcome any questions from council, and we'll take it from there.
Okay, um, well, I think we'll do this, uh, city staff planning, uh, reports and rationale. So Adam and Melissa.
And so the effect of approval, uh, for council today is that it will allow leave for parking provisions per table four, the required parking spaces within the Canora law, and limit use, uh, to a restaurant which is legally noncompliant. An application for consent will be considered once council has the opportunity to consider the zoning bylaw. Based upon, upon the circulation of the application to departments and relevant agencies, uh, there have been no concerns expressed by the application. And upon evaluation, it is need to be consistent with applicable policy, that being official plan as well as the initial policy statement. Um, and there have been no comments received from the public. So, uh, the recommendation being, and in consideration of latest comments received from the agencies and public, is that the application for zoning bylaw, number file number B14910, changes only in the area identified to allow for existing legal noncompliant building and restaurant, might change the zoning from general commercial to hazard lands to general commercial and hazard lands except in 47, proportion of the property located in the southern part of Canora. The fact would allow leave for parking provisions as per table four, required parking spaces within the Canora law, and limit use to restaurants which is legally noncompliant, and that is should be approved.
Um, we're going to express interest. Is there, any person may express his or her views of the amendment, and a record will be kept of all comments. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak in favor of the amendment? Seen none. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak in opposition of the amendment? Okay, could you please state your name and, for the record, and maybe just go to the podium there if you don't mind? Thank you. Um, we'll get you the mic, not for speaking purposes, but so that we can, it'll be recorded for a minute.
Okay. So do I, can see what I have to say?
Yes, you can.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. I am Lydia Eva Hart, owner of, uh, and operator of Lake of Woods Vacation Rental 204 Water Street property. This is not my first time addressing the parking shortage. Parking has been a, a historic problem for the business people on Main Street. The town of Canora, um, owned the property of Shopper Starfish Boathouse located. Uh, the town of Canora sold the property for $350,000. They could have used this property for parking. The town of Canora, Chamber of Commerce and the local survey began to exclude the people's property, uh, for parking on the lakefront, which is known as the Harborfront Parking Lot today. They, they took 10 lots for the business owners, for the business people on, on Main Street. After the development of the Harborfront Parking Lot, there was still a shortage of parking for the business people in Canora. Historically, the business people had to pay the town of Canora $5,000 for each parking spot that they were not able to provide by their establishment. Today, the zoning bylaw states that you have to provide parking within 90 meters. This is, this has not been addressed in the amendment. Lacking of the parking continues to be a ripple effect on the business people in Canora, including myself. And I've submitted a picture of my establishment and where they actually park in front of the hydrant. Uh, in, in the appeal with the OPA 2016, it was stated that there was lots of parking at Port 200 Main Street, so customers to park at the Harborfront Parking Lot, or to park at the other parkeys. This was false because Chipman Street Parke is reserved long time, Matheson Parke is reserved long time, Harborfront South Park Lot, there is 40 meter, 40 meters, one out of 30 meter spots are reserved long time. Burney Drive North, uh, North Harborfront is reserved long time, and the city of Canora is 15, 15, city of Canora parking is 15 minutes. Over the years, the city of Canora continues to remove the parking spot on the Harborfront Parking Lot instead of adding additional parking to the Canora Mall for 100, for $100 a parking spot. That, that doesn't include the cost of relocating the parking lot on the Harborfront and the development of it. Meter parking has become an increased, uh, business for the city of Canora by enforcing, uh, Saturday parking because of the shortage of parking. The business people and their employees are parking in front of the other business owners', um, establishment, taking up their parking spots. As a business owners, I continue to pay hard and try to supply my customers with parking. I am dealing with the parking interruptions of other business people that do not have enough parking or want to free up their parking for their business. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you leave a copy of that with?
I'll email it to you.
Could you email?
This is a lot.
Yeah, that, that's fine. Please do.
I'll email it to you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll, uh, lead into the discussion portion. Is, uh, there members of council? Any discussion or questions, understanding that no decision is made? Kirsty, please.
So I'm actually a little bit confused by exactly what the ask is here and why it's coming up now. Um, but what, they're looking to just change it from general commercial to general commercial with an exception, so that they'll not be subject to the parking requirement?
Yeah.
Essentially, that's correct. And Alex alluded to, um, on December 17th, planning advisory committee will be considering an application for consent. So before we can actually consent to sever the boathouse property, um, we would have to deal with parken for them. Uh, and so this is in a nutshell, something to look into that, so that we can consider it and all capable of doing that.
Okay, so they're asking for the exception regarding the parking because they're looking to sever a piece of property from what's general commercial right now.
Okay, any?
I just have a general, uh, question out of curiosity. Do, um, docking spots qualify for, they meet the, um, overall complement of parking? Is it, are they considered the same as street parking when it comes to the out here?
For zoning bylaw, we do not define dock, dock parking in the required parking zone of table four, but certainly knowing that we will be undergoing a review, unless we have to consider it.
No further questions? Um, members of the public, are there any questions of the application? Okay. Um, no further questions or comments? Uh, this meeting is declared closed. Thank you. Our next one to 12:30.
Alex?
Yes, Melissa.
Thanks. Oh, now it goes up. Okay. We'll call this, uh, um, we'll call this meeting to order. This is read D.14-19-12, number 768, Ninth Street North, Rideau Bay, clarifier site. The purpose of public meetings is to present planning applications in a public forum as required by the Planning Act. Following presentations by the applicant and our city planning staff, any planning advisory committee members will be afforded an opportunity to speak, and at that time, the meeting will then be open to the public for comments and questions. The public is encouraged to read the planning report in advance of the public meetings, which may clarify questions in advance of the public meetings. Interested persons are requested to give their name and address for recording in the minute. There is also a sign-in sheet for interested members of the public at the back of the room. Personal information collected as a result of this public hearing and on the forms provided at the meeting are collected under the authority of the Planning Act and will be used to assist in making a decision on this matter. All names, addresses, opinions, and comments may be collected and form part of the minutes which will be available to the public. Questions regarding this collection should be forwarded to the city clerk. Notice was given by publishing in the Daily Minor in News, which in the opinion of the clerk of the city of Canora is of sufficiently general circulation in the area to which the proposed bylaw amendment would apply, and that it would give the public reasonable notice of the public meeting. Notice was also provided by mail to every owner of property within 120 meters of the subject property, prescribed persons and public bodies, and posted online on the City of Canora portal. An appeal may be made to the local planning appeal tribunal not later than 20 days after the day that the giving of notice as required by Section 34, Bracket 18, is completed by either the applicant, or person, or public body who, before the bylaw is passed, makes oral submissions at a public meeting, or written submissions to the council, and may not be added as a party unless, in the opinion of the tribunal, there are reasonable grounds to do so. A notice of appeal can be filed with the city clerk with the tribunal's required fee of $300. An appeal may only be made on the basis that the bylaw is inconsistent with the policy statement issued under subsection 3, Bracket 1, fails to conform with or conflicts with the provincial plan, or fails to conform to an applicable official plan. No decisions are made at. No decisions are made at public meetings concerning applications unless otherwise noted. The public meeting is held to gather public opinion. The council of the city of Canora will have the opportunity to consider a decision at a future meeting of council. Herein, the applicant will have the opportunity to speak on behalf of their application and the city planning staff will provide a summation of the report and recommendation, after which anyone who wishes to speak either for or against the application will be given the opportunity to do so and a record will be kept of all comments. If anyone wishes to receive the notice of the decision of council, please leave your name and address with the city clerk. If anyone has a cellphone, please either turn it off or use the vibrate option only. Is there any, council, any declaration of pecuniary interest in general nature thereof on today's agenda or from a previous meeting? Seeing none? From a meeting at which a member was not in attendance? Seeing none? We'll head right into the applicant presentation or representative.
All right, yes, we're here today to, on behalf of the number Ontario company that owns this property. It, as you're aware, is part of the historical Abitibi property. The property is adjacent to Rideout Bay and has been the subject matter of a completed consent application of course from two years ago. It's known as, known as the former Clarifier Site and it has a total land area of three point two hectares approximately. The goal of the request for change in zoning is to allow redevelopment of the former site with focus on achieving local needs and priorities such as economic and housing diversification by establishing a mixed-use area consisting of industrial, commercial and residential uses. This would be a proposed commercial use. The, there are other applications dealing with the other zoning issues. The proposed zoning is to rezone this three point two hectare property from heavy industrial, which is the historical zoning for all of the Abitibi property, to general commercial. Surrounding land uses, as council would be aware, are heavy industrial and residential second density to the north, heavy industrial subject to a rezoning application to the east, heavy industrial to the south and Rideout Bay, of course, is to the west. The building considerations generally are that this particular property is, has a easement for drainage that goes through the middle of the property and so the, there are two sections that are separated by the existing drainage easement. The northern, the northern section would be one point five hectares as indicated on the screen, with the southern being point seven six hectares. Future lot owner may want to relocate the easement as part of the site planning process. The site can accommodate multiple principal dwellings consisting of a variety of commercial uses. Site suitability generally is consistent with the provincial policy statement and that this is an effort to promote some growth in the area and to, to deal with redevelopment of brownfield sites in the past and promote opportunities for economic development. It meets the requirements of the official plan and sustainable development, diversified economy and complete communities concepts. The community improvement plan would allow for the creation of jobs and affordable housing in the area revitalizing the site. Deals with the community safety and wellbeing plan from two thousand and fifteen and it encourages development and community revitalization in an area that's been basically empty since two thousand and seven and develops an economy consistent with the Canora Vision two thousand and twenty strategic plan. The application for consent, which was approved a couple of years ago, contemplates future site planning issues, dealing with construction and any other issues that may result from the condition of the property. The city would have to be, we would review in due course as part of the site planning process. So the idea here is just to rezone it into something other than heavy industrial utilization with an effort to promote a more commercial use. And we reviewed the staff report and there's no issues with respect to that from the party of the applicant.
Thanks, Randy. We have the city's planning staff report.
Yeah, so a lot of the kind of information that you're reading from Randy indicated there. So the vision for the proposed redevelopment of the verified site is to allow redevelopment functions as opposed to the zoning bylaw. The subject lands are currently on service in proceeding with this proposal that the current owner would be then in a position to provide the land for sale and develop, will be able to continue development for the commercial use. So as indicated, the future development of property subjects to site planning control and redevelopment required, which may require the work on technical studies to ensure adequate servicing, access and management. So further to that, and that would be based on, with the circulation of the application to departments and relevant agencies, the primary concerns of the community's perspective relate to access and to drainage, which once again, you can, you can deal with at the point of site point control. And upon evaluation of the application, it is deemed consistent with the city's official plan and the official policy statement. Further, it builds off of the previous application in two thousand and sixteen to designate the area as a commercial development under the city's official plan. And the site is also, as Randy indicated, within the project area of four permanent site community improvement plan, which is an indication of the city's priority to redevelop the area for a different and better use. In terms of public comments, there's been one comment received to date from our member of the public. And as such, in consideration of the latest comments from the departments and agencies, the recommendation may be as follows, that the following amendments as proposed for the application for zoning by law are number E fourteen nineteen twelve approved and approved zoning by law amendment to rezone the subject lands from heavy industrial to general commercial.
Okay. Any person may express his or her views of the amendment and a record will be kept of all comments. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak in favor of the amendment? Please.
Good afternoon, I'm Allison Crewe. I live at two fifteen Fourth Street North in Canora. I'm in favor of the amendment to this amendment as well. However, my concern is that large areas of land are being rezoned with the possibility of, under general commercial, a casino could be permitted. I realize I'm late to arrive in this conversation and that asking for the creation of a specific zone for casino, a casino and gaming facility is far-reaching request. However, I'm greatly concerned at the trajectory our city will turn if we as a community and as a whole do not have control over where it could be built. I'm aware that Mr. Fortin from Sudbury's Casino Free Sudbury has sent council members documents outlining the negative impacts a casino built in close proximity to the downtown core and residential areas will have specifically on how casino gaming extracts money from the local economy. It does not create growth. Again, I am taking this opportunity to ask council to create a specific permitted use for a casino, allowing the municipality hosting a casino to have control over where it is located.
Thank you. Allison, would you mind leaving a copy of that with?
My chicken scratches?
Yeah, unless you want to, no, whatever you're comfortable leaving. We need it. Thank you. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak in opposition of the amendment? Discussion, members of council, discussion, questions? I know we've all had the report and we've had the opportunity to read it. Members of the public, are there any questions of the application? Seeing none? Then I declare this meeting closed.
Thank you.
And Randy, for the minutes, I'm just going to identify that you were Randy Sellers, solicitor, speaking on behalf of.